Good evening and welcome to the June 8 Select Board Meeting. If you would, please silence your phones and please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, on tonight's agenda, we have a public hearing on the issuance of a building permit for 674 Berry River Road, a private road for James S. Shaw and Patricia A. Shaw, map 104, lot 72. Connor, do you have anything we would like to talk about?
I'll let Tiffany give the quick stats and we can answer any questions that you have.
The private road building request?
Right, so this is the Shaw on Berry River Road.
Board received copies of each department head memo. It is a nine by twenty edition for a new bedroom.
Thank you.
Yep, you're on.
All right. The board received copies of each department head memo. This one is a nine by twenty edition for a new bedroom.
Square footage of the existing structure?
I can look that up in just a second if it's not included on the building permit application.
Does the septic system lodge not depend on the septic system? Or is he just having another bedroom and not?
He's got a new septic system and his septic system is actually not a bedroom, it's not a room, he's got a lot of increase in the property.
Any other commentary on it, George?
Thank you very much. I have questioned the fact that we need a certified plan for the extension to make sure it follows all of the setbacks necessary and then to ensure that it doesn't have to go before the CBA and also because it's the proximity to the water, I was looking to see if there's anything shoreline protection which I didn't see in here. And that's a difficulty I have with the conditions of the road as stated by, his name is cut off, Dana Drake is cut off from the, but anyway, that's what my objections are at, Mr. Chairman.
Tracy?
I was going to ask, but I saw that there were two check marks missing from the document checklist, so can we potentially table this until we have a full document listed?
Well, the other thing that could happen, Planar Vice Chair, is that we could turn around and put the final approval to this to the building inspector for all the other documents are presented to go that way. So it's up to the, however you want to do it either way. You know, as somebody had said in my earlier conversations today, is that, you know, this is the prime weather to be building, so this is just hold it up for another couple of weeks.
Would John be comfortable taking that on if the board had approved it pending your receipt of those two documents?
Yeah, he's actually buried, he's at R.B., I talked to them and they think they'll have their paperwork ready pretty soon. And I think they were talking the first of this week, they were sending it into the state for the state permit. And he's way outside that first hundred feet, which they're pretty strict on, so, but he's still within the 250, so he technically needs the permit. So I don't see any issues with him either.
And the square footage of the finished space in the house currently is 768 square feet. It should be close to a 200 square footage.
About 20 percent. Okay. So I would then make a motion to approve pending the receipt of the copy of the plot plan as well as the shoreline protections review. Would the approval of the building inspectors reveal of those two documents?
I'll second that, please.
Aye or aye?
Aye or aye.
Article five.
The second one is the issuance, or is a public hearing on the issuance of a building permit at 39 Bassett Drive, Private Road, for Christina and Michael Konopko. I apologize if I mentioned that. Map 241, lot 7.
The board received copies of each department head memo. It includes an 1,100 square foot addition for an accessory dwelling unit, including two bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms.
One and a half bathrooms, sorry, I misquoted the handwriting.
Did the police chief or fire chief have any commentary that they would like to address on it? I just saw that this area has not been marked on. Or is the acting highway?
Off the corner of the cat?
Yes.
There's a note from the fire chief, I agree with the comments from the highway department dated June 12th. I apologize if that wasn't, oh no, that's in your, thank you.
If I might just by way of making sure we're, I believe during the public hearing that you have to be all the road improvements as part of the requirements.
Oh, yes. Yep.
It looks like it needs to be graded to grade the road from the house to the beginning of the road. Have we approved them?
Without grading?
No. Have we approved building permits prior to grading done but with that requirement?
The building, they don't get to close out the building permit, so they don't get their CO for additional space until the grading is completed.
You started that somewhere around 2002, 2003?
That's what I thought, so the motion then would be to accept it, but the CO not be presented until the portion of the road that is listed on the highway department comments is graded.
If anything, it goes back to John's final approval.
Okay. So that would be the motion, the motion to accept with no CO issuance until the road is graded as outlined in the May 28 to 2019 highway department.
I'll second that.
Are there any other comments from the board? Anything from planning zoning inspection?
On the grading, what been done in the past is they go up, look at it, if the road didn't get damaged and it's all real good, they don't necessarily have to grade it per se, except if there's any damage, the road is graded and fixed is how it's been done. I'm not sure if that memo, I mean, you're not a grader down a road, that's already good, kind of serves no real purpose, you know what I'm saying?
If between May 28th and now it's been graded, or between May 28th and the completion it's been graded, but it clearly outlines in this May 28th memo, there are. It has? Okay, done.
No, I just, it's part of the actual individual going up and looking at the road, the ones that he feels need to be graded because they have potholes in, he specifically will say it needs to be graded, if the road's in good shape, then he'll say if damages.
Right, so this said there were potholes and it needs to be graded, and I'm hearing that that's been.
It has been graded, but any private road like that doesn't have the money according to the road that they do put down road, so that it does get potholes in terms of.
Dan?
I think the less more to address if concrete drop damages a culvert or it's wet out, leaves ruts in it because of the construction, then it needs to be dressed up at the end.
Yep, it's not a rebuild.
So leave the CO.
Pending upon.
Pending upon.
So have managed the road during construction?
Let it go.
Which is no different really than where we've done like the, there was that whole conversation on the apron and the turnout on Isaac's.
Okay.
Isaac's turn.
Yep, so there's a motion. There's a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second. Tracy, motion that we don't second. Or George second, sorry. Okay. Aye or aye?
Aye or aye.
Article five.
Now, bye.
Mr. Chairman?
So the first one is, would be included in that because we left it up to pending the review of John, so John will get coordinated with highway to view it and validate that everything is adequate. George?
I'd like to talk to the chair about the change in the, seeing as how we're in public hearing status, do we have the second reading and the last reading for TurboCam?
That's not, the last step of the process is not a public hearing, it's just a vote by the board. So that's an agenda item on the agenda under old business that I imagine the chair refuses.
Thank you.
Yes, I will. Appointments, there is an appointment for Tiffany Codell's introduction to the municipal office administrator.
Right, so last meeting, Tiffany attended the meeting, Tiffany Codell, and I wanted to make sure that she was formally introduced for the public, I know the boards all had a chance to meet her. So Tiffany will be joining us at the table every meeting, recording the minutes and serving the town offices in a support function. Tiffany lives with her family and Lee, two young children, and she's excited to be here, we're excited to have her, so I want to make sure that she was formally introduced. Tiffany Codell.
Welcome.
Welcome.
All right, first of two public comments, please come up to the mic and reminder, it is three minutes per person. Anyone going once, twice? All right, review of minutes from June 24th.
Motion to accept is written.
Second it. So, now, bye.
Article five.
Aye or aye.
Aye or aye.
Aye or aye. All righty. Staff reports. Connor?
So most all of the items of interest tonight are scattered through the agenda under new business and old business. I did want to draw the board's attention to the invitation to the all boards meeting. So as the board decided at the last meeting, I've scheduled the all boards meeting for August 12th. I listed in my report the list of organizations invited, and so how this was structured was the invitation was sent to the individuals in all of these organizations as an invitation to RSPP2 with the intent that we would set up an agenda and a schedule for folks that wanted to make a presentation to the board and allow some time for questions. I've asked for a 10-minute presentation with time, five minutes for questions. I imagine we'll probably have eight or so organizations participate and we'll have a couple of hours to spend on that. I would, with the board's permission, like to prepare some light refreshments as a recognition for the citizen volunteers involved in these organizations. Plan to hold this all boards meeting in the cafatorium just outside this meeting room. Again, as a way to not only receive an update from the organizations doing work for the town, but also recognize the hard work that they do as citizen volunteers.
I'll make a motion to have light refreshments to the all boards meeting. Cap with a cap of $100. It's Matt, George.
Just going to give him water and milk soda?
I think we could pull away.
Do I have a second?
Seconds up to $100.
Dan, go ahead.
We have to do a fruit bowl, a cheese rack or something like that. No one's having a apple bowl meeting.
Good fact.
Yep. All right.
I don't think $100 is enough, but I'll go along with it. Aye or aye?
Well, thank you, very.
So, speaking of volunteerism. Article five.
So the other final things I'll bring the board's attention to, so we currently have two open positions in the town of Barrington, both in the recreation department. The newly created program coordinator position, this is a full-time position funded by the revolving fund in the recreation department, currently accepting applications. They're still accepting applications for the administrative assistant. They found a part-time solution for the remainder of the summer, but will be hiring that position, or I should say a temporary part-time solution, they will be hiring for that part-time position starting in the fall. Also, I'll draw the board's attention to the July work anniversaries, the most with Jim Chase and the highway department celebrating 28 years this month. Other notable at five years is Paul Hagen Miller in the fire department. The others are in there for your review as well.
14 years for assistant director of the emergency, nine years for, excellent. And Marcia, you're on here. Seven years you've been hanging in there, that's excellent. And two years it's great.
Anything else?
That's all, thank you.
All righty. Well, I have our municipal office administrator first. Thank you.
I have for you the payroll manifest for checks dated 7/3/2019, accounts payable manifest for dated July 3, 2019, it's number 2019-54, a notice of intent to cut wood or timber, a property tax abatement, number 10, and a rental permit from the Barrington Women's Club.
Thank you very much, Tiffany. Old business, the sale of town-owned land, map 234, lot 1.4, which is a sale allowed under RSA 4114A. Do we have, am I being certain?
No, so this is the, so the 4114A process is the process, the statutory process by which the town is able to sell town-owned land that is not tax-dated. So this is a statutory process that gives the board the ability to sell the property. The action tonight is to vote to allow the sale of the property. The further details of that sale, the purchase price, other details of the development agreement will be discussed at the board and decided at a future meeting. This is the last step of the statutory process, so what we would need from the board is a vote.
My apologies if I'm out there. This one out there.
Do you want to recreate for the years?
Yes. So I will recreate, can you use my cell phone to turn it over to Tracy?
I just want to talk into the mic.
It's all yours.
So under old business, we have a board vote for the sale of town-owned land, map 234, lot 1.4, per RSA 4114A.
Motion?
If I can just, this is, this is a sale of land to TurboCam and its affiliates for the planning of an expansion of their current buildings and so that they may build a training center, tool room, and research and development center. Would the board like to have any comment in reference to this or move to vote? Seeing there's no comments, we have a motion. Second, second from select person, air. All those voting for the sale of the town-owned land?
Aye or aye. Aye or aye.
Article five.
So, as I said, the, this concludes the 4114A process, which allows the board to pursue the sale of the properties included, and so the town will work on a development agreement with the business to include a sale price and other details that will be brought before the board and voted on in public in order to pursue that project further. The next agenda item will have the vice chairperson address also relates to this project.
So in relation to the project, there is a request to begin tree clearing and lot preparation on this lot in order to remain on schedule. The potential purchaser of the land is requesting that the board allow permission to clear trees and begin site preparation as part of the development agreement. Would the board like to discuss that portion or move to vote? Select person, air.
I'll move to vote. I'll make a recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
And the second by select person, Bailey.
And to be clear, the trees can be cut but not stumped until they have the proper permits and everything.
All right.
Select person, air, do you want to begin the vote?
Aye or aye.
Aye or aye.
Article five. Where's Andy? You're back for excavator rental improvement extension.
All right. Continuing under old business, excavator rental extension, Rick, would you like to come up and talk about where we're at, what you think we need?
As you can see by the very nice memo that Aaron put together to make me look smarter than I really am.
Thank you, Aaron.
That's right.
I'm just trying to read her paper.
She's, the guys have been doing a great job, they've been, the excavator really has not stopped, they've been running it as much basically every day, whether it's actually worked a little bit in our favor too. So currently they're on Young Road, I believe, that's where they were on Thursday, I believe Jim was going back there today to work on the ditch lines coming back toward Route 9, and then from there, the intention would move into the dirt roads, there's a fair amount of work to be done on the dirt roads because of the amount of, particularly bad mud season we had. They got to get in and get work in it, reestablish them, they just wanted to get the edges of the roads back to where they need to be, and then obviously they would like to continue moving forward with next year's paving list. Based on, I see at least enough work to get to the end of September. My recommendation would be is that you would let them go through the end, till the end of September with hopes that you have a new road agent in place and that would give him or her the opportunity to look at where they think that we need to be in reference to whether we should take it beyond the end of September.
Tracy?
This is part of the budgeted amount of money that you have in highway budget.
That's correct, yep.
Okay.
Dan?
So basically we're at three months, another two months, it'll be five months.
Yep.
Don?
Are we making use of the backhoe as much as possible? That is a robotized piece of equipment, and I think the bucket is as big as or bigger than the excavator, so I'm just curious if that's being used.
It is, the backhoe is actually being used, matter of fact, I think either today or tomorrow, we had a culvert failure up on Weeks Lane, and I believe they were headed up to, if they didn't address that today, they were going to address that tomorrow when they're going to take the backhoe, take care of that. So certainly most of the work has been done with the excavator, but the backhoe isn't just submitted or anything.
Just, I am a firm believer, if you own it, use it. And so I just want to be sure that the backhoe is being used for everything that can be used for, so just put on it.
Any other comments from the board? And Dan?
Something to think about. They're doing a good job moving the stone in, but I know some of the stone they put in last year, leaves are building up in the soils and stuff, and right be cheap to sub it up, some of it were vacuuming the ditch lines. Next year involves, because they're making little dams and stuff.
Yeah, and I think part of what you're alluding to, Dan, is also the bigger picture that the next road agent will have to address is we have a 20-plus-year-old sweeper making the decision on whether we would replace that piece of equipment or if we're going to go in another direction for removing salt and sand debris from the salt to the road.
All right.
So I would make a motion based on the very nice outline that was done by Aaron and recommended by our current interim road agent that we approve the extension of the excavator rental.
For?
Three months.
Three months.
Up to three, up to three months so that they don't have to re-present to us in the fall.
I'll second that.
Aye or aye?
Aye or aye.
Article five.
Now, bye.
Thank you.
New business, public safety building camera systems. Are you presenting on this or is the nature of your assistant chief?
I am. So the, when the board was presented with the building permit application for the police department renovation, one of the items that I brought to your attention was the need to update and expand the security system, the camera system, in the police department and on the exterior of the building. That was not a planned budgetary part of the police department renovation, and typically those are projects that we'd like to specifically budget for and plan in advance. We have an opportunity right now, we're purchasing three additional cameras and upgrading from analog or not analog, the digital cameras for the additional cameras in the renovation, and we'd like to use this opportunity to upgrade the remainder of the cameras inside the building from analog to digital and expand the camera system on the exterior of the public safety building in order to have coverage around the entire building, which we currently don't have. So what we did is, this is the organization that was selected by competitive quote for the work in the public safety building, and we have a quote for the work I just outlined. The quote came in at $9,301. And so we have an opportunity, I think, to do this this year. The general government buildings line is we were met with significant cost savings with the replacement of the air handling units. Those, the quote that was selected came in at less than we were anticipating, so I believe that this would be a good use of those budgeted funds in order to get this project done when the ceilings are open, upgrade the cameras inside and outside. So this is for your considerations.
Has it been reviewed by the technology committee?
Chief like speaking to. The technology committee has not been brought into this conversation. We certainly can if you'd like. One of the benefits of doing this work and not saying that your backs up against wall and making a decision, one of the benefits is to coincide with the police department renovation, which is started today and will be ongoing for the next four to six weeks.
Tracy?
Do we currently have a policy for video retention and any privacy disclosures? Does the town or the police department currently have a written policy for video?
I'm not sure if, I know that the town does not have a specific policy, I'm not sure if the police department has a policy. The material is all kept in-house, so the server was purchased new and that is in a secure facility in the police department. It's not cloud-based video storage at this time.
The video is maintained until it overrides?
It's maintained until it overrides. Is it possible to draft a very brief video procedure so that, I think it would be important. I also think under the privacy act, the outside of the building has to be labeled, that in fact, video.
Cameras are posted. We are posted.
Okay, it's supposed to, great.
And the ex, I'm sorry, the exterior of the building is video-only, just for clarification. The only audio is in super rooms in the interior, it's just working sporadically at this point in time, and all of those rooms are well posted, it's only video.
Okay, I was going to say, I would think from a prosecutorial standpoint, you would want a written procedure for that, so.
Dan?
I'd like the technical committee to review it too, and three years ago, we had a financial server, and was that, was that out of the police budget? Or was that out of the maintenance of town? Article, whatever, how was that being?
I do not know the answer to your question.
Tracy?
So in reviewing this, the cabling that they've been installing while doing is the most up-to-date technology cabling that you know of line, so while I would agree it would be important for the technology committee to review technology, given the time constraints that we have, I would say, based on what I'm seeing recommended here, there is not cabling other than the CAT 6E. there, there is not cabling other than the CAT 6E that would carry this information. So, um, it is the most up-to-date cabling and I see that it's got the, um, P O E switch that would be carrying all of this. I don't disagree that if we had time, it would be nice to have the technology committee review it, but I do think those two components is probably something that you could easily speak to.
So, um, I'm less inclined to, to worry so much about having the tech committee review it. I do want to make sure that our outside IT consultant has looked at this, reviewed it. It is important that they're involved in the process. That's what we hired them for. So if we're spending the money to have them, we should be utilizing them as that resource to validate how and the way in which we're doing it.
I apologize if I misunderstood the original question. Rockport has been involved in the police renovation from the beginning. Um, they were actually one of the first ones to mobilize. As the board's aware, the recent approval of the upgrades in IT infrastructure, where that's another project we're performing in conjunction with this project. Again, the ceilings are open. Uh, they're replacing the air handling units when the ceilings are open also. Uh, so Rockport's been a part of the process from the beginning. Thank you.
Dan?
Well, I, I don't care what the cables is up, but three years ago, we had obsolete server that replaced. And that's why I want to make sure we're doing all this work and I don't have to go back and add the server obsolete.
And to be clear, and I apologize if I didn't, um, add this in the backstory from the beginning. So all of this camera equipment is, is mostly cameras and cable only. Um, they're using that server that they upgraded three years ago. And one of the reasons we're able to accommodate the addition of new cameras and the upgrade of these cameras is because the town invested in that server infrastructure in the past. And so it's a pretty robust piece of equipment, the server that exists. And we would even have the functionality to have, um, separate zones with separate administrative controls. So all of this hardware is using that server that the town purchased. So we're still using that, we're not replacing it.
George?
One of the concerns I have is how to take care of signage and signage of land is in place. The other part that bothers me is the fact that we've not known about this before. At least I haven't known that the equipment was running in we have now sporadically, which in turn puts the town in a hard spot if we have something went wrong in there. So I think looking at it this way here, this will ensure us with our claims and what have you to better cover everything we have. Especially the part that scares me is the outside. The outside scares me because you have two parents that are exes and you know how the statements go and the song goes and everything else. It really bothers me if something were to happen out there and we didn't have all that stuff professionally. And my last question to ask is, is it, that this system is not accessible from the outside or is it?
The intent is for this to be, to be and remain an internal system, correct?
Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Couple of other comments I want to make around this. Is this system on the backup generator?
I don't know the answer to that question, Tracy.
Yes. I, I just want to make sure it's imperative that it is on the generator because otherwise your system shuts down and is essentially useless. Um, the other piece, so when you look at this, one of the biggest components um, is the panoramic 180-degree camera, which I don't know if anybody's ever dealt with security systems or not. They're great cameras, but they're only good at what they're pointing at at the time that they're there. You don't have 180-degree view all the time and you only can see what it's aimed at. And I have seen numerous cameras that have moved around, misaimed. So you can spend a lot of money on a camera that's great as long as it's positioned where it needs to be. And 90% of the time, if you look, they're positioned at one point in time, pretty much all the time. So you just, you end up spending a lot of money for a great camera, but it almost always maintains its position in one set area.
My understanding, and I asked that specific question. My understanding is this is a camera that records 180 degrees simultaneously, uh, not a, a moving camera that records only a portion. Uh, but this is because I, it is a, a large expense and the goal was to have full coverage. And so this is a camera that records 180 degrees of video, um, capabilities that are all at the same time.
It's a way to shed that.
I don't know the details, but I, I asked that question and I was told that it was. I could verify.
Yeah, I definitely want to verify.
But that was, that was a concern to me as well.
Yeah, 'cause typically that's, that's not the case. I, I would definitely want to know. Chief Walker, if you, if you need to receive.
What was that, what was that, did you hear?
Start a dish shot.
Anything, okay. So you may have 180, 360s?
Well, we can't get a full 360.
I thank you for the opportunity to speak to the issue. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to certainly help you make a decision. This system, I spoke to Chief Williams. Uh, the system's big enough to expand. So while we have not made the decision on the fireside as to whether it makes sense to expand at this time to other areas of the building, the system would be big enough so that should we make the decision to, uh, put cameras within the fire station side a year from now, three years from now, three years from now, that the system's big enough to absorb that. So that's a good thing. The other, uh, thing I want to point out is, um, we had a situation where somebody tried to gain access to the storage building out back. The camera did not pick that up because of the limited site distance availability. So, uh, the new cameras would actually be able to pick up. Not necessarily maybe that building per se, but, uh, it would be nice to be able to have the cameras hit all of the doors of the public safety building anytime, uh, once in a while. If a door gets unlocked, left unlocked or something, at least they get the cameras showing on the doors so that, um, they'll let that add a lot of security to the fireside. If that helps you make a good decision.
Any other commentary from the board? Anything from the police department that would like that?
Make a motion to accept. Can I, sorry. I would make a motion to accept the proposal pending that we verify that the backup generator will be tied to the equipment and also that within 90 days, there would be a written video policy and procedure.
And do we want to validate that the 180 degree, 180-degree camera is actually a 180-degree camera? Not one that just points wherever you aim it?
Sure.
I want to show the concrete, please.
So approval amended so that we would accept the invoice and go ahead with the purchase with the knowledge that the system would be tied to the backup generator, that within 90 days, a video policy and procedure would be written by the police department and that the actual panoramic camera would actually cover 180 degrees.
Thank you very much.
Not intermittently.
Right.
Thanks, that's good.
Thank you. I'll second that. Or was it already seconded?
Seconded, yeah, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll, three second, my second.
So.
Hello?
Yep. Now, aye.
Harder, aye. Bailey, aye.
Aaron.
I held off my reluctance.
There you have it.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
And I will note as far as the policy's concerned, later this summer, the police department will be bringing four committee of, um, officers who have been working on a proposal for either dash or body cameras. They've been spending a lot of time weighing the options, looking into the details. And I think that it would be a good use of the knowledge that they've acquired through the process to put into developing a, a simple policy for the retention of the recordings on, onsite at the facility as well.
So the next item on here is the police locker bids, the anticipated cost of the police firearms, personal duty lockers, required sealed bids. Uh, they were opened this morning, uh, this afternoon, they add new Mike Connor and several other folks.
Yep, select person Hatch was there as well.
Yep. Like to talk a little bit more about?
Absolutely. So similar to the camera upgrade, um, this was a portion of the police department renovation, uh, project, which I indicated at the time the building permit was brought forward, that this would be forthcoming. We put this project out to bid again because the anticipated cost triggered the purchasing policy for sealed bids. The town was able to solicit two bids for this project. One from Tiffin Metal Products out of Tiffin, Ohio. The second from, uh, Donigan Systems out of North, North Borough, Massachusetts. Uh, Tiffin Metal Products is the staff recommended path forward. Uh, their quote was for $12,941 for the 14 lockers and installation equipment. Uh, the Donigan Systems quote was for $24,050. Uh, the bid, uh, the request for bid asked for the installation to be listed as an optional alternative. Uh, Donigan Systems included installation in the $24,050. The Tiffin Metal Products, uh, $12,941 does not include, uh, installation. Uh, the, the folks from Donigan Systems explained that the assembly and installation was a required professional attention. Uh, so that's why they include it regardless. Uh, I, the, again, the staff recommendation is the Tiffin Metal Products at $12,941. Uh, and as you'll see in my report, uh, my recommendation is to use the, um, uh, town building preservation capital reserve account. Uh, currently the police department renovation budget is 16, uh, $60,959.63. Uh, the last available balance in the town, uh, building capital reserve was $81,179.44. Uh, and the, the anticipated project cost for the renovation was $80,000. So we'd still be under our anticipated budget for the project.
I do have a question. If we, I believe we talked about also using that building, uh, renovation fund for the communication period.
That'll be the general government buildings line. Uh, that was $100,000. We anticipated $90,000 for the air handling units and that, that bid came in at $54,000.
Right. I just wanted to make sure because looking at the amount spent, we're gonna be pretty close to that building capital reserve line.
The balance, the, and the total cost including these lockers, uh, will be about $73,000.
Yep. A little over $73,000.
So at the last meeting, the air handling bids, we were verifying that $54,000 was accurate. We met our needs. And so what I'm understanding in this current discussion is that in fact, the $54,000 is accurate. The air handlers did meet our needs and that that was the most appropriate choice for the proposal.
Correct.
Thank you. So I would, um, oh, sorry.
Yes, I have a question. One of the, uh, we talked about the installation here and one of the bidders, uh, is, uh, town administrator noted was the installation had to be done by professionals. Do we have the people on board or do we have the people that are doing the work for us that are capable of assembling and installing these, uh, units?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have an estimate or an idea of what that's gonna cost, labor side?
So the, the, uh, staff recommended, uh, proposal of Tiffin Metal Products. Uh, the assembling installation, uh, they come as two pieces. Uh, the top locker unit and the drawer bench unit underneath. Uh, it's a matter of bolting those together and adding the bench on top. Uh, and that work would be done in conjunction with the, um, renovation project.
And we're sure that that does not void the warranty on the actual product?
Correct.
Okay. And the only other thing I see on here is that the freight is only held for 30 days. So these would have to be stored pretty quickly.
The, the intent would be to order, uh, whatever path the board chose, the path would be, or the, um, the intent would be to order them tomorrow, again, to have them ready and installed during the renovation.
Just to note, there is an eight-week lead time on those, according to...
Up to eight weeks, correct.
Have we talked to them to figure out what the actual dates are?
Uh, I was told that, uh, that that is there up to eight weeks, that, that they include as a, as a maximum for length. The other lockers have a similar...
So I would make a motion that select board approve the expenditure of $12,941. From the, I'm gonna make sure I get the account correct, capital reserve account.
Town building preservation and rehabilitation capital reserve. Page 30.
Oh, sorry. Okay. From the, interesting. From the town building preservation and rehabilitation capital reserve account, $12,941.
I'll second, nobody else go.
All right. Roll call, Bo. Aaron.
Bailey, aye. Harder, aye.
Snap, aye. So just for a general comment, by the time this is all done, the police renovation will actually not be at the $60,000. It will be closer to, um, the 80 or maybe even a bit more than that.
And that's why it was important, uh, if you'll remember when I brought the building permit application, that was the close to $60,000. I wanted to make sure it was clear to the board that that did not include everything, that the two portions which were separate. Uh, and so I've tried to be transparent and include the other numbers, uh, through the conversation to make sure the, the cameras was the only part of this project which was unanticipated. Again, we saw that as an opportunity to upgrade the hardware, uh, some of it that needed to be upgraded while we were already in there doing the work. Uh, so I appreciate the board's support, but absolutely recognize the cost.
I would like to make sure at the end we haven't, have a total of what the entire project cost was with all adders, extras and additional information because I think it's fair that the public knows what they've spent for total costs in this project.
And I would encourage any projects that we have being presented in the next budget year, be quoted to completion so that we don't have to expend in small amounts in this way. Something to consider.
Yep.
And one of the side effects of acting as our own general contractor, so that original budget that the board approved, uh, we did not require sealed bids for that. Uh, we're acting as our own general contractor and subbed out, uh, the, the specific work. So separating out the lockers as a sealed bid definitely separated a little of the process. Unintended consequences, sure. Thank you.
Let's make sure we can, do a little better with it. Not that it's terrible, but we can do better. Um, Frisbee intercept memorandum, MOU. Um, Chief, would you like to come up and talk about that? Uh, well, he's on his way, Connor. Do you have anything you would like to add?
Uh, no, no substantive changes and this is an important service offered by Frisbee.
So the, currently right now Medicare only allows one entity to do the bid, the billing. And so a number of years ago, um, we entered into an agreement where if it's a Medicare billing issue, Frisbee pays, uh, Frisbee does the billing to Medicare and paid Barrington a flat fee of about $358 for the transport. The benefit was that Barrington was guaranteed their money relatively quickly. Uh, but the downside was is there was a fair amount of money getting left on the table. Uh, I worked in Frisbee a year or two ago. We're fine, we're finally at a point where they're ready to implement it. But they will be charging the town a flat fee of $175 for a Medicare, uh, transport. Barrington will take over the billing for that transport. So Barrington should see, um, significantly more return on that. Uh, we, we obviously with budgets, and I have budgeted in the, in my budget, gross budget numbers to cover that $175 per call, even though we take ambulance revolve on revenue and partially goes into one fund and pop it. The other half goes into the general fund, but we have to do a gross budget.
Tracy? Are we prepared to respond to HIPAA requirements if we take on treatment, payment or operations medically? And this is clearly payment.
or operations medically, and this is clearly payment? Are you prepared for the HIPAA requirements for any of this building?
Yes.
Any other comments?
Do we have those requirements in place now? Or how, and if you don't, how long would it take, chief?
The requirements are in place currently, right now with Frisbee intercepts with us for a non-Medicare patient. We've worked with, there are certain, there's certain information that we put into our narrative, to our billing report that triggers through the billing company, triggers them setting codes that say that advanced life services, advanced life support services were provided to that patient.
And the disposal of those records, you are willing to say that they're being shredded when you dispose of them?
We, yes, when we shred records, we're obligated to hold on to them for, I have it in my office, we meet the requirements. We shred as much as we can right now. We're basically going to hold on a cover page, and I believe it'll only do it either three years or four years that we have to hold that stuff. We're following the state's requirement for medical.
George?
Thank you. On average per month, how many calls do you make? I know the number's high, but how many would you say per month do you make?
So a rough number is is we probably do 60, probably 60 calls a month. We probably do about 50% of transport. Out of that 50%, I would say that we require intercept services from either Frisbee, McGregor, or Dover Fire for approximately eight or 10.
So, go ahead. So this means that I just did fast, so it's $10,500, we would be paying a month to Frisbee?
No, no.
You said, you said 60 calls a month, and each call costs us $175?
No, no. Only, only they, we do about 10 to 12 intercepts a month, and only the Medicare intercepts would be charged that way. So if you're asking me for rough number for Medicare intercept, I'm going to say six or eight of them.
Thank you. That sounds good.
And them are not all Frisbee doing those. McGregor charges the town of Barrington $200 bucks, and the city of Dover charges $400.
So you're, you would roughly estimate that out of worst-case scenario, it's about $4,000? That's if everybody went through Dover?
Yes, we use Dover when it makes the most sense for the patient, but the vast majority of our intercepts are handled by Frisbee and McGregor behind that. Dover has a very small piece for us, and we're on Route 9 and need a paramedic. It makes the most sense to have a medic from Dover on the road to meet us on the road. So we always do what's in the best interest of the patient.
Yep. Okay. Other comments?
I would make a motion that we allow the town administrator to sign the level of understanding with the select board's understanding that we are ready from the perspective of federal HIPAA requirements to do our own internal building.
I will second that motion. Snap, aye.
Article aye.
Bailey, aye.
Here, aye. All right.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. Meeting house tree replacement, I'll let Connor start it if there's anything you want to add to that.
So Rick was out, looked at the trees today. This is a project of EverSource upgrading their transmission towers that are degrading in order to improve reliability. And Rick, like I said, was out today looking at the trees they had marked.
There's two, there's actually three trees, all are hardwood trees. They're basically right on the very edge of the road. They're well within the town right of way. And I'm making the assumption that the town right of way is between the two stone walls and there. I did not go and see much to make sure that I was right, but they are so close to what we perceive to be the center of the current Class 6 road that I'm not even a little bit concerned that they're on somebody else's property, so. And I think they'll be relatively easy for them to take them down. I think the developer would have to take them down anyway, but I don't think EverSource, I think they need to get in there and get markets.
Okay. Dan?
Yeah, well, Rick, can I test on it? That was approved for planning board, so they'll be coming in too. And Barry's survey's been out there, so I don't think it's questionable. Coffee on your shoes.
It's actually one of the wider roads in town, we found out, because it's so historic, it's remarkably wide.
So, I don't know, but pre-massurance of, we don't be EverSource, but the developers are becoming more than filled with it, so.
Yep.
Can we get that out of the way tonight or?
They came in preemptively to ask permission to get your trees cut?
Well, I don't have an issue if EverSource is looking to do it. I would assume that would be in the best interest of everybody because the developer doesn't pay nor the town in that regard.
They did similar work years ago to the entrance of meeting house off Smoke Street. They brought in some gravel and cut a few trees to do similar work.
George?
My question is, are they going to stump them?
I don't believe so. I think the issue is that these two trees kind of do this, and they're concerned that the height of the vehicles are going to be a problem, so the stump itself won't be a problem, and it wouldn't be a problem for, in the shape of the road, because I think it just narrows it up so that they can get their equipment.
So the way some of the conversation was going, and so the stone fences, are they considered protective where they're at? Or if they did damage the stone fence, are they going to be the ones to do the repair work?
These are well out of the, well away from the stone walls, at least 15 to 20 feet away.
All right, thank you.
Do you want to answer a question? We have a motion and a vote? Anyone want to make a motion?
Sure, make a motion to authorize EverSource to remove the trees in the right of way on meeting house road.
Dan?
We are trying, we haven't, I understand that the developers coming in to work too on that.
What do we, what do we, what do you, I'm not sure what you're asking. This is about EverSource.
This is about utility infrastructure.
With the approval of that, something.
I believe Chairman Naps, you're just looking at meeting house from the perspective of EverSource?
Yeah.
In regards to meeting house before Mr. Barry did come in, before he started the process to ask permission to do work in the road because he wanted to make sure before they went through the approval process, there wasn't going to be an issue.
We did it.
Thank you.
So I've made a motion to authorize EverSource to remove the trees in the right of way on meeting house road.
I'll second it.
Call both. Here, aye.
Bailey, aye.
That's right.
Article aye.
Snap, aye.
Thank you. Topo eight. Sand bid.
So the town has prepared the request for proposals for winter sand for the 2019-2020 season. This is, we're seeking the board's approval to put this out to bid. We've included language requiring that the bid price be held for 90 days, and that we have the ability to inspect and ensure that there's no stone larger than 3/8 inch that area.
I don't have an issue with this. Does anybody have anything?
No, don't see anything catastrophic about this at all.
I don't think any motion, just need uniform consensus and putting it out to bid. Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
And this will be brought back to the board on July 22nd, for the meeting on July 22nd. The bids will be open, the bids are due on July 17 at noon, and they will be opened at noon and advertised as such. So if there's a board number or two that would like to be present, we'll make sure at least two staff members are there, and we'll prepare the recommendation for the board meeting on the 22nd.
I'm sure. We're going to play it again. And then the next item is the fire EMS weekend shift differential. Would you like to talk about it, that there will be a lively discussion on it?
So let the fire chief speak to this in a moment. The, I say, the only thing I want to say to begin with is the problem that the fire chief and I have discussed in late is identifying that the ability to ensure our shifts are covered over the weekends. And with a hybrid force of regular part-time, full-time, and call members, it's become increasingly difficult to ensure that the fire chief is not covering these weekend shifts, which is an additional ask of him. There's no cost to the town, no real cost, but there's a cost in the time commitment of our fire chief. Additionally, at times, the fire chief has had to commit our full-time staff to cover these weekend shifts to ensure that their staff coverage on the weekend. And at times, that's had the town incur overtime costs. And so this is a solution that the fire chief believes and I support, is worth trying as a way to incentivize the shifts on the weekend.
Tracy?
But when you say holiday shifts, chief, do you mean which holidays?
There's typically six holidays that are an issue. The other six are not. I say six, New Year's, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. The other, the other six are less of an issue.
And when you indicate that you'd like to pay the dollar per hour, do you mean beginning at midnight and ending at midnight on the holiday? Or do you mean beginning at, what do you propose, those timeframes?
It's, we staff 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and that's what I'm looking at covering.
6:00 a.m. on the actual date of the holiday to 6:00 a.m. on the following day?
Twelve-hour shift.
Just 12 hours, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And that, you estimate that to cost $2,800?
Yeah, that's, that's rough number, 52 weeks a year, 50 bucks, well, 24, so it's 50 bucks a weekend, 50 weeks, $2,500, and then like the other $300 is figuring, it's a little less for the six holidays. So my intention would be is to pay that shift differential to anybody that works the Saturday or Sunday or Wednesday holidays, and I would identify the six holidays.
And I know New Hampshire Hospital Association does a survey of other providers of emergency medical services, and that most of them pay between $1.45 and $2 per hour for those weekend shift differentials. So it's certainly in line with what other emergency medical services provide.
If you recommend it to raise, I will go along with you.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Dan?
I would make a comparative study on salaries.
So it's a good question, and it certainly ties into this, but this is a request, we're making separate of that. The compensation study is a thoughtful project that we anticipate to have results for the board to consider at the end of this year, beginning of next year, and certainly that will be a thoughtful process. This is certainly something that should not wait, and I think, and I know the chief of creation, be considered then.
So I have a general comment on it, because it wasn't all that long ago that we went and instituted a whole weekend paid system. And then now we're, we're back talking about a shift differential on it.
So I think what you're talking about, what was approved in the budget was to overnight coverage on Friday and Saturday nights, so that we would run a 24-hour a day coverage. Because we don't have the bulk of those spaces in place as of yet, that program has not been instituted. In my budget, I had proposed that the people working Friday and Saturday night, the overnight coverage, I budgeted so that they would get a two-hour, $2 an hour shift differential because, you know, people, we're in a, we're in a time right now, so we had instituted that program because I ended up having to get that space done hopefully in the next month or two, and then we'll move forward and try to get them night shifts covered. But we're, Barrington's been pretty lucky in the fact that we have a, we instituted this program five or six years ago, we brought people in seven years ago, whatever, to work weekends, and we were able to provide, find adequate staff. Since that time, we've hired one individual a year ago that works every Sunday and Monday, that's his regular shift. We're very lucky that he chose to take that. I've had, it's been more and more of a struggle to cover the Saturday shift, and as I say, in some cases, I've covered it myself. This many years in the business, it's my intention to have weekends off as much as I can, and especially this time of year, my wife and I enjoy riding a motorcycle, and it's a little bit tougher to do that in December, so if I have to work on Saturday or Sunday, I'd rather do it in December or January. But I don't want to do it at all. And the, so it forces me, if I can't find somebody to take these shifts, it forces me to have one of the full-timers do it. And by way of disclosure, either one of those guys with their time and a half rate, it only takes 10 overtime shifts, and we've used up every bit of this. I don't know if this dollar's going to fix it. I'm hopeful that it will be enough of an incentive to bring somebody in. You know, the industry as a whole, you take the, you take the job market at whatever 2% or 3% unemployment, you know, the, the people aren't beating the doors now to get, take full-time jobs right now. I know there's one fire department that struggles, that they, they're revolving door traces or whatever, the revolving door of firefighters going out, and it's tough to entice somebody to come back in. Well, places like Barrington and smaller communities like us, we face that same struggle. I just lost a good employee to another department. I would have bet you, I would have bet anybody money two years ago that that individual would not have been enticed away from me. My other longtime, full-time employee is on a list right now, could get a call tomorrow morning, and as I explained to Connor, my concern is, is I don't know if I'm going to be able to replace him. When we replaced the last opening position, we had a total of five candidates applied for the job. One of them was eliminated, never even got the opportunity to do an interview with us. During the interview process, there were three that would have been what we would have called candidates that the town would have been interested in. And by way of when we hired the last two full-time employees, we had 15 or 16 applications in the job, and now we're at five. Rochester and Durham both did a recent hiring list, and both of them broke a double-digit number, but not by much. And so my fear is, is that, one, we have to work to make sure that we're hanging on to the people we got, and number two, while I'm not standing here saying that, you know, that we have to be competitive with the bigger communities, we certainly have to make sure that we're being competitive with communities our size. And I talk very closely, the town building provides overnight coverage, and they sometimes struggle to fill shifts, so it's a product of what it is where one of my longtime permanent part-time employees had just given me his notice, which is why we're trying, we're getting ready to fill a spot I have to advise tomorrow for. He's a full-timer in another community, so he works 48 hours in that other community, then he comes to Barrington and works 24, and it's just too much. It's getting to the point where the individual says it really is too much, and something's got to go. So Barrington obviously draws the short straw because we're not his full-time employer. I certainly supported the decision, but I'm concerned that I'm going to be able to fill that position in this kind of climate. So again, I'm not sure this $1 an hour is going to solve the problem, but I, you know, you guys know me, I've never been one to stand there and jump. know, you guys know me, I've never been one to stand there and jump the numbers if the sky's falling, but I am concerned about being able to fill positions and provide the adequate staffing that the town needs to provide these services. And I think it further strengthens what I've been trying to tell you guys for the last six-plus months, that we have to take care of the people that we got, and we have to make sure that whether they're call numbers and we need them to come out in the middle of the night, or they're the part-time people that are around to cover the off shifts when people are away working, that we're at least, the town's being competitive, and that we can hopefully attract quality candidates.
So I guess my question is, is this something we should, if we're going to look at it, if we're being instituted, and do we put a timeline on it to see what it does? Like, okay, give it a year, and then we revisit it? Then also, once the economy changes and we move to a recession, you're going to have a fair amount more candidates that are going to be looking at this stuff?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that the economy is dictating the lack of firefighters and EMTs in this country. I don't think it's the economy that's doing that. I think it's that we have to, that traditionally, the occupation is underpaid for what they need to do, and I'm talking across the country. So when you stop looking at a full-time firefighter who's going to make low to mid-30s, be a firefighter EMT with the certifications they need, there's other jobs, there's other jobs, trade jobs out there that pay more money. And I think to some degree, that's why this isn't necessarily Barrington's fault, it's a nationwide problem. I don't think they're coming up to do it.
Dan?
I'll make a motion.
George, do you have something else?
I do. I would like to add to that motion, I guess. First question is, we're only talking six days, correct?
No, you're talking weekends, 52 weeks out of the year, and six holidays.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I already had a motion taken, so I'm not going to second it.
I would second the motion, and I am not in agreement that there be a time limit for this. I think if we are providing a stipend to a police department, I think it's very appropriate to provide a weekend and holiday shift differential of $1.00 per hour to the Fire Department.
Any discussion?
Discussion?
Discussion.
Thank you. I think that that dollar should go to a dollar and a half, just to ensure that we have the right people in the group. That's just for discussion, it's not a motion to make the change.
Dan?
I'll stand at the dollar.
I would second at the dollar per hour.
Okay. Go, go. There I am.
Bailey, I.
All right, come on by.
Yeah, bye.
Thank you.
Is it my, the Chief's understanding that that can take place at the next payroll cycle?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, like a dollar notice.
You're going to know.
The next payroll cycle, the Finance Director, Briesman. And then we'll to the Finance Office. As soon as pract.
Thank you.
Use of equipment for community events? Yeah, so this is a general discussion that I'd like to have with the board. Recently, the town was approached, albeit last minute, but to participate in a community event on a Friday. They were raising money for veterans, the food pantry, the scouts, and other groups. And they were requesting the involvement of town equipment as part of their drive-in event. And a piece of the highway equipment, the loader. And so this, being on a Friday, it would have cost time of employees, it also would have, there would have been a minor cost of equipment and fuel. And so, not having an opportunity to bring it to the board, I let them know that the town wouldn't be able to participate. But in talking with some department heads, I agree that it's important for the town to be able to participate in community events, even those community events which have a measured cost to the town, whether it be in staff time per hour, or fuel costs, or equipment costs. And so I want to make sure that the town is able to, at the department head level, and maybe at another step at the town administrator level, to approve and use town equipment and town resources to participate in these community events. And I wasn't sure how the board felt, and I wanted to give the board an opportunity to talk about if there were certain limits that would be reasonable to put on those approvals at the department head or town administrator level. And my intent would be, certainly with police and fire participating in community events, happens regularly and is certainly encouraged. With the highway department, highway equipment, it's, you know, I feel like it happens sometimes, but not as frequently. I think it's important. And like I said, I wanted to know if there was a path to have approval for that use of time and equipment at the town administrator or department. Dan first.
What use do they want with the loader?
Just a piece of equipment, similar to a touch-a-truck. You know, they were picturing having food pantry donations in the bucket, and, you know, not dissimilar to the touch-a-truck event that the library hosts here, an opportunity to bring community members out, whether there's, you know, whoever's involved at the community level, but certainly for the town, for community events that happen in town. I think it's important to have a presence and be available. And, you know, certainly have department heads and the town administrator use discretion and participate in, but have the ability to. George?
How many requests do you think we have received in the past for a year? Do you have any idea?
Not even having been here for a whole year, that's a tough question for me to answer. Certainly, the Fire Chief and the Deputy Police Chief might be familiar with how many times they've been asked. Don't think it's a lot, but I think it's worth considering and knowing how the board wishes the town to handle.
I think it's safe to say on our end that probably somewhere on average of once or twice a month, we would get that, so somewhere between 12 and 25 times a year.
At that time, Mr. Chairman, I think that really goes far beyond taking care of the public and setting an example. So that's quite a bit.
So from a PD standpoint, I'd say it's comparable, if not a little more so, than the Chief, and I'll speak directly. Cub Scouts quite often reach out. I was at Cub Scouts today for about an hour with the Cruiser and the Dog. PTO reaches out, different schools, and we're going to the daycares, we're going everywhere else. Generally, it's a duty unit, so it doesn't incur a lot of extra. But again, the use of the vehicles, especially in the Chiefs and I, it's a bridge to the community. I feel strongly, as I'm sure the Fire Chief does, this is something that we need to be involved in. When the elementary school reaches out and says, can we get a cop in a car down here? When the Cub Scouts reach out and say, can we get a cop in a car down here? Anywhere we can get a cop in a car, and reach out to the community and extend that hand and friendship, we should be doing it, definitely.
Tracy?
See, the only line I would like to draw with this is that we discussed this in the past for for-profit versus not-for-profit groups. I certainly think from an educational perspective, you know, Cub Scouts and any type, I mean, in order for you to build your firefighting force, you need to entice, you know, children to want to go into this type of work. And the same is very true being in the police department. And so, I do think those are valuable situations. The only, you know, concern I would have in reference to this is, and with the loader, you're moving a large piece of equipment, it's probably diesel fuel, I have no idea, so I personally would know far better than I on that, but the cost, and then from a safety perspective, they're really fun to crawl on and what have you. And so, if you, above and beyond placing the equipment, we're then also going to pay someone to be there to ensure the safety of the usage of it, I think that's something that it should come before the board. So, a little different than, you know, touch-a-truck, bring a car, you know, showcase the K-9 program. I see a difference.
I agree with Tracy.
Dan?
I have no issues with parades, fundraisers, whatever, but with the town equipment, if someone wants to volunteer and bring to them, I have no problem with that, but not to pay people, they ain't going to have, I'll give you a budget.
So the state of New Hampshire doesn't allow you to volunteer and be an employee when it comes to these situations, so I, you know, and again, in reference to the loader, if somebody was going to park it, you'd be paying them two hours to bring it down there, and then at the end of an eight-hour day, two hours to retrieve it. And that's what's legally required, and that's where the conundrum comes in. So I think we all want to use town resources and equipment and build community. I think in this particular instance, I would probably have said, I don't think it's a wise idea, there might be another way to go about it.
Well, the general public, we do a budget. We want to budget a line item just for this, do it. But right now, we're taking out of line items that are dedicated to somewhere else.
Go ahead. Three minutes.
I don't need that long. If I may, with the board's diligence, if you would allow myself and the police and the highway, the ones that work typically, the ones that get hit asking for this, to sit down with Administrator McIver and come up with a policy. Real fast thinking, I would say that, you know, I guess what I'm looking for is that we go up to fire drills at the various daycares, we go up at their fire prevention, we stop and show them the fire trucks, and give them a pencil or a ruler or something. And again, it's good PR for the community, it's good PR for the town, but these daycares are, you know, they're for-profit businesses, but it's really not about that, it's about the kids and children filling up stuff for the town, and certainly the highway department enjoys that with their open house and getting the opportunity, they love to go up and put the equipment over for the library touch-a-truck and different events. And so, what I would envision is that there's certain things that I've just gone along and done over the last 20 years, where I've just said, okay, this makes sense to do this. And what I would envision is that we come up with a policy that allows the department head the latitude to say, yes, I'm going to participate in this, because it's going to happen during a time when there'll be minimal cost for the town, and we're not going to pay somebody time and a half to come in on a day off and do this equipment around. If I take a fire truck over there, and I drive it over there personally, the relative cost of the diesel, but, you know, obviously somebody else, they may be one of my volunteers who are a little different. So I would envision that we come back with a policy that says, if it's going to cost us with parameters, it's going to cost the town over X number of dollars, then we would have to come to you, or at least be able to defend you why we did it. If anything less than that, we would be, it would be the department's discretion. So that's sort of brilliant of asking, is that, give us the opportunity to sit down and develop a policy presented to you for consideration in the future.
How would the board like to proceed?
It's a wise idea to review a policy and represent the community.
That's a good idea, I think I can go along with it also.
Are there other aspects of that policy that the board would like to see considered a-year, consideration for profit, not-for-profit, a-year, consideration for duty equipment and non-duty equipment? Are there other aspects that the board would like us to consider?
How much money's come out of the budget? There's budget for other side.
Actual costs, okay. The insurance cost, because of how we're insured, would change generally for the types of events, which is a good thing.
So, and I, you know, not to treat the highway department differently, however, from a public service perspective, teaching children to run to a firefighter in their equipment in the case of a fire, very important. Teaching children to trust our police department and be able to disclose anything they need to report and feel comfortable with that, very important. And there are certain aspects, you know, to the open house that I think is also very important. Kids are encouraged to see the large equipment, consider going into that field of work. They certainly love it, they're thrilled. I just, the concern is, we've worked very hard on the budget each year, and if twice a month, we were paying to move heavy equipment at a request from the public, I'm not sure the same return that you get from the police and fire interaction occurs with highway. I think our residents within the town are very happy with the work that's done in the Public Works Department, especially in the wintertime with their hard work on shifts to keep our roads clear, but yeah, there's certainly a concern about costs.
And so what I'm hearing is maybe the public safety, police, and fire, highway department are listed different in the policy, and that the result of the policy isn't that it's a no for anything outside of the trigger, but it's a request to the board for board's consideration based on a specific request for a specific event.
The only other thing I'd add to it, being the fact that it would be just within the boundaries of Barrington, not outside.
So could I respond to that, though? There are times, especially with the passing of a firefighter or a police officer, and it may even occur with a highway fatality of some sort, that in order to honor the passing of someone working in those roles, that would be the other caveat that I would have to this, is that we are able to reach out beyond our community walls when we need to honor people.
I agree with you 100%.
Mr. Chair, if I may, especially where we're concerned, we do a lot outside the community
in and of itself. And again, I'll speak to my specialization within the K-9 role. We have a very good K-9 unit within Stratford County. That being said, we cover for each other, too. So if Officer McKenzie in Rochester, due to his schedule, is unable to do a K-9 demonstration, they'll reach out to me, vice versa. If I happen to be in Scotland, and the Cub Scouts in town need something done, I'm more than happy to reach out to Chief Burnier or to Officer McKenzie. We move around quite a bit, and due to specializations, Sergeant Byer and her active shooter training is going to be called and is called to go outside of the community as well and provide that services to business and schools. So we do go outside a lot, and that's a working relationship we have with all the other departments and communities surrounding us, inside and outside of county.
And I think we most recently became aware of mutual aid that takes place within the highway department, too. So I think that's important to know.
Great. Look for that draft policy at a future meeting. All right. Select persons reports. Select person there.
I didn't have any Thursday night conservation.
Okay. Mr. Bailey?
The last meeting I had, it was canceled for lack of interest. There's another one coming up that I'll be attending. The ZBA also had theirs, there's an alternate, something else.
Select person there.
Our zoning board has spent my third year helping with these kinds of accidents, and I've talked with the school, they only do one month in the summer, and so she's going to study with them.
I have not had the pleasure of having to attend a rec. department or school meeting.
All right. Planning board meeting is tomorrow, so that will, so I have no update from that end. The Town Building Committee has gone together, and I was looking for my notes that I had open and somehow closed, and I'm clicking for them. Do you want to add to it while I think the law? Yeah, so the Town Hall Building Committee has met on a few occasions. They've been very productive meetings, and we're working forward on developing the design specifications for the RFQ for the Town Hall Building Committee project. Right now, we're at the process of leveraging sample RFQ documents and responses from other design-build projects throughout the state, so the board will be reviewing those next. We've had input from department heads, we're seeking the input from the IT services provider, and we're moving forward again with those design specifications. The important thing, and when Chair Person Napp scrolls to the bottom, I'll be reminded of the dates. The Town Hall Building Committee has set a goal for itself to bring a preliminary RFQ presentation to the board at the August 26th meeting for the board's consideration and review to be finalized at the, and again, this is a goal, and this is what the goal that the Town Hall Building Committee set for itself, but with the goal of having finalization at the select- finalization at the September 9th Select Board meeting in order to get that RFQ out and soliciting response.
All righty. Not much more I have to say about the Congress, the job, and everyone on the board has been very active in making morning meetings to make that happen. So that takes us to the last public comment. Anything? No. All right. So then I will close public comment, and we will look for a motion.
I would make a motion to go into non-public for purpose of personnel.
All right. There I.
I'll second it. Bailey, I.
Personal, bye.
That, bye. Very good.